We have the will?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We'll call to order this work session Monday, August 18th. The invocation given by Ellie Watson and the pledge of allegiance by Allie Mordner.
Please bow your head. Dear Jesus, thank you for our wonderful city and the people that live here. Thank you for... Live here. Thank you for everyone that works hard to make our city great and bless each one of them. Thank you for our schools, teachers, and leaders. Thank you for loving us and please help us to remember to serve you in all that we do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight, it's a public hearing, alcohol license for the Courtyard Casino. This is the time and place for the public hearing. Anyone here for this? Anyone here against this? No one here against this? All right. Ms. Phillips, will you go over the investigation report?
The legal business name is Courtyard Casino. Type of license, retail wine, on and off premise only. Located at 3509 South Broad Street, Suite 206. There were three businesses surveyed with no objections. The nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply and zoning verification complies.
And you'll see stapled to this, a note from Ms. Hall, the revenue officer. Anyone have any questions on this?
Is it just, is it just wine?
Any other questions? Well, that concludes the public hearing and we'll move this to next week's meeting. Thank you. Number two, tourism grant application from the Art Society of Jackson County. Ms. White, are you? Or, okay.
I'm Crystal Pittman, here on behalf of the Art Society of Jackson County. And we are asking for a grant, tourism grant, for our full moon art festival. We think this will, we know that this will bring foot traffic to the downtown area for businesses. And it's a great way to showcase local art and performance arts and kind of bring a culture to the town.
And you'll see and hear they're asking for an amount of $1,500. So anyone have any questions for?
Have we ever given money before?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. Number three tonight, discuss request to proceed with rezoning of property. Mr. Irvin?
I'm just here to say about getting my property rezoned because actually it's worthless with what I wanted to use it for initially.
You'll see in your packet, there's a map that outlines Mr. Irvin's property. And it would be, it's right next door to the current Rock Quarry. That's already zoned M2. So anyone have any questions on this property? So next week, we will, I'll put it on the agenda next week. We will vote whether or not to have a public hearing. And of course, you've seen how that works. Then we have to do a public hearing before we can do any rezoning. Then you have to wait 15 days to vote, so.
A third party notified for this coming up today. I thought I'd get a letter in regards to this happening today.
You would get the letter?
Yeah. No?
No. They, they put letters to the people around you, but you, you petitioned for it, so they won't send you.
And Josh told me it would be the first of next month before this come up. I mean, I, I didn't know that about it until about 15 or 20 minutes ago.
Okay. Well, like I said, I mean, we can slow it down if you're not, okay.
No, that's fine. I didn't, I didn't know. I mean, somebody told me and said it was happening this evening.
Okay.
You should have gotten an email, I'm sorry. You should have gotten an email. I'm sorry if you didn't get that.
All right. So we'll put that on next week's meeting, whether to proceed to a public hearing.
So I need to be here next Monday?
That's up to you. It's just going to be a vote whether or not to go to a public hearing. But when we, if it does go to a public hearing, you will need to be at that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, number four, cell tower proposal, telecab wireless site design. Mr. Bates?
Matt Bates, Telecab. We were working on the cell tower proposal to the city for new communications tower, kind of on the west, southwest side of town. Tower Co. is the tower owner operator. First tenant for the tower would be T-Mobile. It'd be made available for the other uses like AT&amp;T and Verizon. Currently, I think we've just got some paperwork that we've submitted for everyone to look at as far as the agreement between the tower company and the city. I can answer as many detailed questions as y'all would like to go through tonight about the proposal. Not sure exactly what y'all want to hear at the work session, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay. If you'll turn to page 14 in this, you'll see the, the actual site that they're looking at. This is on the backside of the future cemetery site. It's not actually part of the cemetery yet, but it is land the city owns that could be part of the cemetery in the future. How tall is the tower?
The tower would be 260 feet tall. We tried to, all, as all these projects, co-location is the quickest and best use for T-Mobile or any carrier when they go into market. They're just one of the towers in that area. So then we tried to find a spot that we thought was, one, going to provide the best amount of coverage for, for the city and for the hospital and those areas. But also hopefully be as far as we could be away from any residential dwellings. So I think probably the nearest residential structure would probably be the apartments, kind of to the southwest where the tower is. That's probably anywhere from about 600 feet to 1,000 feet away. But then, for the most part, the property that is in the expanse of the cemetery, it would be the, most of this was surrounded use. And I think it's owned in one manufacturing or light manufacturing now. And the road that we depict in our sketch, we can't adjust that.
Yes.
We talked about if they.
We discussed moving that road, not straight across that property. Of course, we don't want to ruin the whole property, but going down the property line there where you see the trees to get to it that way.
We're still in that phase where we can make adjustments.
How close is that to the hospital?
How close is it to the hospital?
I see the, I think I see it on this, but I can't tell the scale.
A bad distance. It, it's fairly close, but I don't know the exact distance to the hospital.
Oh, that's the jail, I'm sorry. Yeah.
One item has come up.
Put my glasses on, I can see it. There's a big difference.
One item come up in discussion and it was from paper from Mayor Evak.
Yes.
That's some of their, that's on one of their routes coming into the hospital.
Yes.
And.
You want to go over, I, I think y'all set for license and things like that.
So, so what we did in this case, normally we'd only file a 7460 with the, with the Federal Aviation Department. The mayor, some staff made us aware that the helipad does fly in and out of there, so there was concern with that. We spoke to the chief pilot and I, and I apologize, I remember, I forget his name at the moment. But he recommended that we go to Alabama DOT and talk to their aeronautics division and kind of get some insight from them on what we should do for that. My understanding is those communications have happened and their direction to us was just file with the FAA and they didn't need to do anything further. So our, our proposal, and as we do these, and we do these all across the country, we would file that form with the, with the FAA. They would review it. They'll have to either give us a determination of hazard, or they'll give us a determination of no effect. And if it's a determination of hazard, then they would restrict the height of the tower so they could come back and say, we've evaluated, you can only build 245. Or they could come back and say, you can build nothing. But if they do clear us, then we could move forward.
So you haven't been cleared yet, but that's, that's been.
No, they won't let us do that until we kind of have agreement in place where we could actually apply on the property and do a formal, do a formal survey and get 1A coordinates of the exact tower location. We would take that information and file with the FAA so they'd have the exact ground elevation and tower location.
How long? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The FAA would make the final decision whether or not you could build it.
They would. And they, they do that on every project that we have. Those filings can take anywhere from as little as 60 days to 120 days. So normally what we would do is we would file that along the other, a lot of environmental, state, federal regulations and paperwork that we have to do.
As far as the coverage, I know this is like a prime coverage area. Yeah, or for us, it's actually a bad, I mean downtown, we hurt for coverage and everybody in here knows that. And so this would help take care of that?
It would, it would. It's, it's oftentimes hard to, people used to try to say, well, can you tell me how big of a circle it would cover? That's hard to say because it's going to adjust basically as people use it.
Yeah.
So if it's covered a football game near the high school and y'all have got everybody there on Friday night, it's going to cover, it's going to, you know, suck down that coverage. But it should enhance it. Y'all have already got a few towers around town. Probably most of them are back to the north or back to the east near some of the commercial development. But there's just a lack on this west side and this other side. And what happens is, these networks were built on years ago and I've been doing this since the early 90s. It's all I've ever done. They built it for 1.5 users per household. Well, back in the late 90s, one person in the house had a phone. Well, now usually if you've got a family of four, the mom, the dad, the two kids have a phone. But that also doesn't count if they're streaming at home on a device or if they've got a laptop or they're using them at school. One of the big events we had, you know, I know we still talk about COVID a lot, was a lot of people started working from home. And so where the network was designed to cover traffic and cover the places of business, it wasn't dense enough to cover everybody at their home. So now a lot of these networks are having to be built even better to then cover if somebody's working from a home office or their, or their homeschooling their children, or they're just at home for the day. So they're continually trying to improve the network.
Back to the Air Evac again. Did that give you some idea what elevation they'll be when they come by that tower?
They didn't give me that exact elevation to know. We do know that, I built a site recently, Salem High School in Indiana. And we were near a helipad issue there. We do know that, and they know better than I, so I may butcher explaining this, but the helicopters usually have a little more control. While they are limited, they are going to have specific paths. My understanding is they would work that out with Alabama DOT. They may kind of create a different kind of flight path in some way. But most of the time we run into bigger issues. It's when it's a traditional airport, international airport, where those planes have specific glide slopes and elevations. And those planes, of course, don't have the flexibility to a degree that a helicopter would have. But they did not give me an exact path of elevation.
Any other questions?
Is this, basically what we could vote on this, we would have to see if this thing would be okayed by the FAA, right?
No, we would vote to either approve it and FAA would do their thing.
We could approve it with the understanding that FAA approves it.
Well, that's true, but if FAA doesn't approve it, he can't build it anyways, no matter what we say.
And there's a lot of other regulations like the FAA that we'll have to go through. There's Phase Ones, NEPA's, environmentals, Native American tribes will have to be reviewed. And we could hit a stumbling block with something else that we've not foreseen. Normally we don't, it's just an issue we work through. But all those would have to be in place for us to order to move forward.
Any other question? All right. We'll move that to next week's meeting. Thank you. All right, number five, discuss additional airport maintenance hangar. Mr. Williams? Cory, be, be on standby. If I need you to pull him away.
Excuse me from my address, but I was just notified this morning and I'd be speaking tonight.
Yes, sir.
Donna didn't have me anything fixed that I could put on. That's, that's interesting about the antenna, I'll check into that too. Because we have glide paths in and out of the airport. And it's hard to maneuver if it's foggy and you're coming in, you can't see it. But I will check that out. You got anything I can have on that?
Appreciate it.
We don't want to mess up anything we've got with FAA approving our glide, our glide path and on our, on our instrument approach. Okay, that's good. As long as we follow all the rules. Now where was I? That was a, appreciate getting to see the ladies and gentlemen of the council and present what I've been talking about. I talked about it a couple of years ago, expanding our maintenance hangar. Steve and I, seven years ago, put together a lease to start a maintenance hangar in Scottsboro. Remember that Steve? And we took about two hours getting the leases drawn up. And that thing has just blossomed. I mean, there's planes coming in here from 300 to 600 miles away besides the planes that are based here. So a maintenance hangar is not being able to handle the traffic that they've got to come in and out of, you know, in and out of their hangars. So we've come up with a deal, been working with the mayor and we got two councilmen on our aviation board, our airport board. And been talking with the county commission and they're participating with funding. Economic development, it is an economic development plan because it's going to add high paying jobs. And he's already done, Chris Martin has already hired additional three IAs or going to be IAs training under supervision in anticipation of being able to get this hangar built. And we're looking at a 10,000 or 12,000 foot hangar, depending upon what we can raise. And the mayor's come up with some ideas and some people with a deck. I've come up with some, you know, we've talked about this and there's money out there. If we don't go get it, we're not going to get it. You know, they're not just going to hand it to us. So I'm not going to talk dollars and cents tonight because this is a work session. And I just want you to be advised, we'll be back. But it, it's going to be real beneficial to the airport to be able to expand into maybe rebuilding the engines. We take them off out there, send them off, create them, send them off. I think he's going to be able to redo them here, put a man or two in doing that. And then avionics, that's a whole different part of maintenance for aircraft. He's going to be able to have an avionics shop in. So I'm just, I'm just here to, he wanted me to keep it budgeted under 45 minutes.
Definitely.
But anyway.
Talk about that hangar, existing hangar, what you do with it.
The existing hangar will not go to waste. We already, Cory, you want to talk about it?
So as far as the existing maintenance hangar, I have letters of intent from telemanufacturing, lumber contracting, and market livestock to bring their corporate aircraft. So they would sign leases that, I kind of came prepared to talk numbers, but if we're not going to talk numbers, they can. They have signed letters of intent to make that available space.
So definitely won't be a hangar sitting empty.
No, it, it will fill up, just snap your frame once.
I, I don't, I don't know if we could build enough.
I know.
Right now.
We could just keep building them. And that's something we've done through the FAA is buy property and we got plenty more property, build plenty more hangars on. But they're funded differently. Property's hangar is funded by FAA and of course it's a 90-10 funded. The city comes up with 5% and the state comes up with 5%.
And of course, this maintenance hangar will bring more jobs out there.
It'll bring more high paying jobs.
Yes.
You know. So that, that's basically all I'm going to talk about now. After hearing any questions, if you want to ask anything right now.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Williams on this? What we're looking at is just voting whether to move forward with this. And of course, we'll have to figure out the money part. And we'll vote on the money later. Is to move forward, Mr. Williams, to continue to look for grants, continue and, and see what the bottom dollar is going to be for the city.
Well, you need to know how much money is coming from us before you apply for the grant.
Yeah, it's a, it's, we've got up to a million dollar grant, maybe, from the state. Depends on how, it's a matching grant. It depends on how much the city comes up with against how much the grant will be. So we had, we had Frank Farmer up here a couple of weeks ago, or about a week ago, to go over. We had a meeting with Excelite that they wanted to talk with him about on a virtual meeting. And after that, we talked to him about this. And we're kind of under the gun on getting the grants in for '26. That's the 25th of September. So we've got to have the grant written and in by the 25th of September.
As far as numbers go, if we were due to 12, you're looking at probably 3.1 million to build it.
About around it, yeah.
And the city would be responsible for 1 million.
So we probably are talking about not really spending money till we're in '26 if we get approved.
Yes. Yes. So those are kind of the numbers. If we did a 10,000, you're looking at probably half for the city.
2.1 you'd be.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm talking about the city's portion.
But the reason we're throwing that in there, about the 12. This thing, if it blossoms like it did when we first started, it will, you know, we'll be back here in a couple of years wanting to know if we can get 2,000 square feet added. So it's just something to think about. You're in budget meeting, think about it.
Yes.
I'd ask you for a raise, don't get anything anyway. Smoke it over and see what we can do.
So we can double your salary.
Double it. But I appreciate you letting us come.
Anyone have any questions for Cory? Brother? All right. All right, we'll put that on next week's meeting, whether to move forward.
Y'all are a good council to work with, mayor's good to work with. We've been fortunate, I've been on that board 25 years. It's good that you put two city councilmen on it. They're good to work with. So it's just been a pleasure. I hope we get this done because it's going to benefit the county, the cities in the county, the counties in the city. I mean, it's, all these organizations are, are made for working together. And that's what we want to do, is work together.
Yes.
And that's why I've talked to all of them, tell them. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. Before we do, number six, discuss paving and drainage proposal for Ed Henry Drive. We're also going to discuss on Legion Drive too. So you've got that, both of those in your factor. So Mr. Little?
The first one is Goose Pond, basically Ed Henry Drive. We would start right there at Civic Center. There's a, a joint there. We start right there at the Civic Center and go to the first entrance of the amphitheater. And of course you got the price there and just ask that you'd add 5% contingency on that price. Any questions on that proposal?
From the Civic Center to the first entrance of the amphitheater.
There, yes, sir.
And you add both those sheets together, correct? You add both these sheets together for that one, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. The next one is, of course, when we do pave and we always try to go out and identify some crawl strains that need replacing. We try to go ahead and do that at the time. And the street department, Todd Nim, has identified two, they're corrugated metal crawl strains. They're 30 inches in diameter and tied about four feet deep, so four, six feet? Ian, okay. To do it, it, it takes a great effort from our district department to do it. So what the, the state is doing a lot of this, the state actually gave me this contact, it's called a pipe lining. And basically they'll go in and line these pipes and keep from digging the road out and messing with utilities, gas lines, sewer line, water line, and fiber optics that you have to deal with. But that's that proposal to do that on Ed Henry Drive. And that, that would be under the new asphalt to do that. Questions on that? And then the last proposal is Legion Drive. Todd and the street department replaced some crawl strains out there last month. And that would be from the curb up there at Hero's Drive. And we would pave it all the way around, about 100 feet past the crawl strain pipes. So it wouldn't just be that isolated spot. We'd go ahead and try to pave some of that street that goes in front of the, not bottom part, but veterans park there. And we'll ask for 5% contingency on that also.
Anyone have any questions on either one of these streets? No questions, we'll move out to next week's meeting. Thank you. Next, discuss the HVAC unit for the Recreation Department. Ms. Spraver?
Thank you for letting me come again. Looks like it's been a habit. Today, I want to talk to y'all about three of our HV AC units. The unit number two is the one that's in the hallway and into the locker rooms. That needs to be completely replaced. It's up on the roof, so there is a crane fee. Unit five is also on the roof. It was, the unit number five was built, built, we purchased it in 2021. It did not have a curb put under it. So now with it not having a curb, it's leaking through the tiles and into the rec comp floor. So it needs to be picked up, a curb put under it, and reinstalled. And that air conditioner is the front offices. Unit number nine is meeting room 100 to 102. And it needs to be completely replaced. You've got two quotes. About $2,700 difference in them. But if you see on the second page, I think, they have warranty on it. The first page did not say anything about warranty. So.
Will the crane be added on, on top of this?
Yes, the crane fee is on the first one.
Okay.
Yes. Any questions?
So can you reach out before, before next week to?
Ask about the warranty.
Ask about the warranty for sure.
I will.
Because I would expect there's some kind of warranty.
And they just.
And they just said, yes. Anyone else have any questions on this? All right, no more questions, we'll move out.
You've got to have about my glasses to read it.
We'll move that to next week's meeting. Can we just stay right there? Because number eight, discuss surplus of equipment for the Recreation Department.
Most of it's used stuff. It's a Watchman scrubber. We bought it in 2006. It's only used for parts. We've got a recumbent bike that's used, elliptical that's used, a pool vacuum cleaner that needs an electrical cord. But every time our lifeguards used it, they pulled the cord out and it was about $700 to replace it. And then the two tall lifeguard stands, they were very uncomfortable getting up and down. It's a safety hazard. So that's the items I'd like to surplus.
And you're asking the council to put the results of your surplus money in your general fund?
Yes, wherever, I know I've asked for a lot of items, so either for the trucks, for the air conditioners.
I, I've just asked to, the two pieces of equipment, workout equipment, just check with the police department on those.
Okay.
Before we surplus them. If that's something they could use in their gym, they're.
I'll get with it back here.
Yeah, they, they will definitely check and see if they can fix it first.
I know the elliptical does not have the arms. It's one of the older ones, it's just the feet.
Yes, okay.
I think we have two people that actually uses it at the rec comp.
And they may already have this equipment, I don't know, so. Anyone else have any questions or anything?
If we do give it to the police department, will we still have to?
No, we just won't.
Document it at all?
We'll just take this off of that when we vote to surplus.
Just wanted to make it clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll put that on next week's meeting. All right, number nine, discuss the resolution to adopt transportation plan pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act. Ms. Phillips?
As part of the Rebuild Alabama Act passed in 2019, every August, we have to adopt an annual transportation plan that just allocates our anticipated revenue to a certain project. So for year 2020- So for year two thousand and twenty-six, our anticipated revenue for this extra gas tax is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So you guys just have to put that to a certain project.
And like I said, we've, we've done a lot of paving lately. We could just pick a street, because there's not enough money to pave even one of them, so. So anyone have any questions or comments on that? All right, we'll move that to next week's meeting. All right, that'll conclude the meeting tonight. We'll go, send the delegation, so we've got a report from mayor. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I really don't have anything, um, tonight, other than just glad to see Jim, Jim here, um, beside me, so. That's all I have.
Ms. Oliver?
I don't have anything, thank you for coming out.
Mr. Ashford?
It's good to have Jim back with us, as beat up as he looks, even. That's all I have.
Go ahead.
Well, I was, since our last meeting, Ralph passed away, so.
Yeah.
Everybody remembers his family and all of us, because we sure do miss him.
We do.
That's true.
That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's been a tough few weeks. Not only that, we're still doing budget meetings, and we'll go back in there and start soon as we get done here. I'll remind everybody, there is a meeting next Monday, August twenty-fifth. But September first will be Labor Day, so we will not have a meeting that day, and we will double up on the eighth. That being said, appreciate everyone coming out. Let's go to budget meetings. Where's Jordan?